Educating, Informing, Serving. TV Keeping Government Honest.
All right, in 6:34, we'll start the Wednesday, February 22nd, 2023, meeting of the Westminster Select Board. Adjustments to the agenda? We did have an adjustment. You had a discussion. We needed a discussion.
We need to discuss the heating system and how we rush.
Okay, so we'll do new business G.
And?
Heating system. Yep. I do not need.
I can talk under other business or whatever. She cannot take action on my report. She just, I didn't tell her I had a report.
Okay. So we'll do manager's report under other business. All right. Any other adjustments to the agenda at this time? Seeing none, we'll move to acceptance of minutes February 6th and February 8th.
Motion moves to adopt minutes for special meeting of the Westminster Select Board, Monday, February 6th, 2023, conducted at Westminster Vermont Town Hall. Present was Jason Perry, the Chair, Kevin John Hughes, the Vice Chair, Katrina Hamilton, the Clerk, Craig Allen. Nathan Dugat was absent.
Motion is made and seconded to approve the minutes for Monday, February 6th, special meeting of the Westminster Select Board. Any discussion?
I'm gonna abstain from voting since I wrote them.
Okay. I need to stay in because I've got. All right. To the straight.
Why am I staying?
He was not here.
Okay. Yeah.
Still get this quorum on him, Mr. Chair.
Yep. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So three, two.
Chair, motion to accept the minutes of the Westminster Select Board meeting held Wednesday, February 8th, 2023, at 6:30 PM at Westminster Vermont Town Hall. Those present, Jason Perry, the Chair, Katrina Hamilton, the Clerk, Kevin Hughes, the Vice Chair, Craig Allen, and Nathan Dugat.
Motion is made and seconded to approve the minutes for Wednesday, February 8th, 2023, regular meeting of Westminster Select Board. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Communications and public comments. Anybody online?
No.
Nothing for me.
All right.
Talked to Cole Streeter. I did talk to Dave Gorham today. He was wondering about the trailer. And I said, I think Craig will get in touch with you. And he wondered what the status of it was.
It's something that keeps getting brushed aside.
I know we talked about it at one other meeting quite some time ago. Yes, the trailer is out behind the post office. Yeah. So.
We'll try to get it this week. We'll figure it out this coming week.
Somebody's gotta get in there and look at it. I might call them, do bring it back to them. Obviously, I'm charged, but need to empty it.
This coming week for me looks cold, so I'll have time. I'll, we'll figure it out one way or the other. We have to cut the lock? We'll cut it, put a different lock on?
No, we got these keys to it because the listers went in looking for their coat rack.
I have time one day afternoon.
Okay. We'll figure it out this coming year.
I happened to be doing something for him and he mentioned it. So I said, well, I'll see.
Okay. Any other communications and public comment?
Mr. Chair, if I may, three minutes.
Yeah.
I want to take this opportunity, Mr. Chair and all those present, to thank in the following order, Mr. Craig Allen. This is his last public meeting as far as our forum. I want to thank him as a citizen and a member of this community and a taxpayer for his many years of selfless service, dedication, and commitment to our town and for moving us through what would many times would be very difficult and at times long and arduous situations. His service should be duly noted. I wanted to take this opportunity to thank him. It's gonna be my last chance to do so. Now in my sixth and final year also as a board member, and I wanted to thank him for his incredible service. I would also like to take this opportunity to thank Mr. Nathan Dugat for his intermediate service who stepped up this summer during the time when we had a deficiency as far as members. And in the middle of that, I had medical distress and other board members were busy with subsequent business. And he took time out of his schedule and answered our request to be here to make sure that the town always had a voting quorum. And his professionalism and his longstanding professional career certainly was an easy decision. And I wanted to thank him again as a citizen and a taxpayer, speaking only for myself, for both of these fine gentlemen. And keeping it to three minutes. So thank you very much as well, Mr. Dugat.
Agreed.
And lastly, I wanted to thank Mr. Jason Perry. As you know, we have a rotating chair. Jason was an outstanding chair. And I've had the pleasure of being with multiple chairs. We have a rotation in the chair which we adopted. This was a tumultuous year, but his leadership was consistent. It was a real pleasure to serve beside him as the Vice Chair. And I thought he brought the most professionalism that I've seen and no disrespect to any other member of the chair, including myself, certainly exceeded mine and certainly exceeded any other chair. I thought that he handled the situation that came with great professionalism and during a difficult time. And I think we were very lucky to have his leadership, his consistent fairness and equity in dealing with the board and making sure that we were all together and kept the board almost without question in a unanimous and collegiate manner. And I'm looking forward to serving with him again for my final year on the board. And I wanted to thank him for his incredible time and consideration and leadership today. I thank you all for the indulgence, but I wanted to make sure that all these people knew just how much I really appreciated all the work as a taxpayer and a citizen. That's three minutes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Any other communications and public comments?
I have a question. Must, must you rotate chairs? Must you?
Is that question directed to me?
It's directed to the, to the Select Board. I know you adopted it, but is it, is it, you know?
Well, again, look, I'll speak to that. Again, everyone's big good. Yeah, I mean, considering the years that I've been on this board, I've also been on the planning commission. I've been on the DRB board. We adopted a very, a very sweeping conflict of interest policy. It provides not only inclusion for all those that come on this board, which hopefully will be more inclusive going forward. It also provides a switch and the ability of each board member to be inclusive and ascertain and attain the level of knowledge and interaction with all members of the town government and have the competency developed to make sure that that person who is in a point position, and that's all it is, is an administrative position.
Right.
There's nothing over equal to the rest of us.
In my, it, just my thought was with a year of obvious inconsistencies, it might, I don't know. I just thought it might be helpful to, to, you know, have Jason as Chair another year just for continuity. That was just my thought. Nothing, no malice to it, just.
Certainly appreciate your vote. My vote will not be for that based on the fact that we have started under Sue and then myself and then with him, this, what I think is the proper policy to make sure that there is inclusion and expertise given to everyone who's on this board and exposure and to make sure that there is not one person that gets caught up in, how shall we say, the stickiness of town government, that conflict of interest remains free and equitable based on the policy that we have all agreed upon. And there's a competency issue here. And also let me say this to you because it's a good question for me. In my six years, I think the best decision this board ever made was to root, was to rotate the chair, was to make sure that that competency is not rooted in just one particular place. And I certainly can demonstrate on this board, certainly other people that can make that clearly, can handle that not only well, but I'm sure that person or persons is going to do a terrific job. And again, this is my one position. It's not, that doesn't necessarily mean that's going to happen. That's just simply that this one taking it. And I'm in front of the public and I'm in front of the taxpayers. That's how I look at it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I can appreciate that position though of having things being limbo still and then changing Chair. But I think I'm in agreeance with Kevin that we should rotate through. I'm gonna be vice along.
Of course you are.
Vice Chair, so we'll still have, we'll, we'll figure it out. But, but I do, I do appreciate your, your thoughts though, for sure.
Thank you.
And my wife would like me to step back too soon as well, so. Any other communications or public comments?
Do you have emergency management on your?
Yep, we do.
Yep.
All right. So we'll move on to, excuse me, unfinished business, adopt personnel policy. I think.
I'll speak.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I'm pretty sure that we are in compliance with the sick leave requirements by law, but I, there were a couple of areas that were kind of gray. So I sent those pages regarding our sick policy to VLCT for review and opinion, and they have not gotten back to me. So I'm going to request we table it.
Okay. I don't, I don't have a problem with that. All right. So we'll table that till the next regular meeting. And, yeah. Anything else on personnel policy at this time? Seeing none, we'll move on to final discussion before town meeting. I guess I put that on there just so we knew we were all on the same page. We knew what we were.
What's it working for?
Articles just.
Articles we were each doing and that. I planned on being there fairly early. I know we don't, our section is until the end, but I'll help set up whatever needs to be done.
I'm gonna set for the childcare.
I have, I actually have not heard back from them. I will double check that tomorrow.
I'll be there early as well for the duration.
Okay.
And.
Yeah, I don't plan on going anywhere. I'll just stay in.
Yeah, and while we're on that, is it confirmed that Chip will be there to speak on questions, free to help you folks out?
Okay, great.
I just, I mentioned it to him. He's willing and I just wanted to confirm.
I think that's fairly important, actually.
All right.
Does anybody else on the board have any? All right. We'll move on to five-year capital plan. I keep putting this on here because I don't want to lose sight of it, but after town meeting, we need to really think about buildings and maybe another committee to delegate time. What building, what buildings need what, what they need dollars wise and, and how we're gonna.
I think we should move forward. We only have a couple more years left with ARPA, so I really think there should be like a quick committee to look at a five-year, you didn't turn them all over to ARPA to see if they're there. So, you know.
Talking about that.
Got it. Include the Grand West, Mr. Community House. Anything that we possibly do before we have a chance to lose the money?
Yeah.
On it.
Just this building alone, walking around with this, the camera guy, their rotted trim, rotted siding, the paint's falling off. I mean, I wouldn't even dare guess what it would take to, to get it back where you're not ahead of it, but you're at least keeping up with it. So between that, town garage, Westminster West, Town Hall.
What's gonna come up is solar panels. I mean, if we're gonna do a town garage and we're gonna include solar panels, you know, where are we going on all of it?
Yep.
And it's just, with this ARPA money being there, let's just throw it all out, see what's available and we can go from there.
I think it's important to remember when you talk about ARPA money though, it's only $623,000 left in there, which to some that sounds like a ton of money, but really when you're talking about big capital projects, it's really not. Town Truck's $250,000, so it's not really a lot of money.
And you have to have a plan before next year, so.
Right. I can say the more insurance that we lose out because we didn't, as we keep talking about it, then realize that, oh wait a minute, we don't have our act together. Now we're not gonna get it.
Yeah. So we'll, we'll table five-year capital plan until after town meeting and then we'll get, we'll, we'll have to get right after that. So we'll move on to new business, emergency management. Here we are.
Here we are.
All right.
So our line, Emergency Management Director Ben Matur was, he has decided that he's got too much on his plate and he wouldn't be able to fulfill the role. So I met Pete Smith through Cole Streeter. Yep, we are in it now. And Pete was formerly the Fire Chief over in Wolfhole for many years. And I discussed it with Pete briefly, and he's been in contact with Ben, and he is willing to be our Emergency Management Director and see how it goes. And I don't know if Pete wants to say anything about himself besides what I just said.
It's nice to meet you.
I know you don't know it. Well, I think you know Kevin.
You know Kevin and Nathan. Being in the fire service, I feel as though it goes hand in hand because they're first responders, we're first responders, and we have to do the initial call on it and whether or not we have to call in the state or how things go.
Yep. And Ben's willing to work with you training wise. I don't, I don't know, I know it requires a certain amount of training, but.
Right. I haven't got my feet into it yet as far as getting laid. When I was Fire Chief over there, I never got involved in it. But I, yeah, I'm looking forward to see what Ben's got to offer.
Okay.
I'm sure that I can work with the chief and we can come up with some things and.
Okay. Great.
Yep.
I, I get emails from the state about emergency management and what you all, what you folks do. And at some point, why don't you come in or get me your email?
Yep.
And I will forward the email to you or get you the information to email them. So you're on that chain.
Okay.
I get them as well.
Yeah, yep. I, I get some. I don't know how they get, got to me, but I get, once in a while I'll get something. I'd like to thank Ben though for, for taking, taking that on to keep us compliant and keep things moving. And I, I understand he's a member of another department as well as a road guy here. So I mean, I hear pulled three different directions if you did have a problem. So I do appreciate that though, and I appreciate him not just dropping it and saying he would help out until we found a better, a replacement.
Very good.
All right. So maybe what we should do is.
Make a motion.
Well, we either should make a motion or maybe you can get with Ben and figure out what you need, what you don't have, what, and you know what I mean?
Right.
And then we can, and then come back and say, yeah, we're good to go. I actually have all this ready to go or no problem. I just don't want to make an appointment and then find out that there's all kinds of training you gotta do and everything else. So I think that makes sense to me anyway, just as my own opinion.
I don't think I have a preference. Do you have a preference?
I don't have a preference.
Okay.
You know, when you make appointments, you give them terms. So when you commit, you kind of commit though, whether it's a year or two years or six months.
I'm not sure of the length of time or.
Right, just so that basically you would know.
I have no idea.
Yeah.
It's always typically been a town, technically here, the town manager was emergency management.
But when, normally you act right after town meeting when we do all appointments after we were doing it. So it'll be coming up.
Yep.
So actually, that's what would happen. We would, you could appoint him as soon as you have the first meeting when you appoint all the positions, you could appoint him in the emergency management and it's where you would come out the door.
Okay.
Normally it's just, it's good for that year.
Yeah, that makes sense. Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Along with the coal wearer. I always liked that one. Who weighs coal? But you have a coal wearer as well. And a fence viewer, you know.
All right. So let's, let's table emergency management until the next regular meeting. And maybe between that time, you can get with Ben and just see where, where we're at or where you're at, and we can go from there.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you for doing it.
Thank you. Appreciate it. So we'll move on to B, ARPA scoring sheet approval. We were at, well, you were at the meeting. Go ahead.
So they, the ARPA sheet has, in order to make, they've gotten a lot of feedback that wasn't necessarily positive about their positions. So they, through VLCT, they've got a, kind of like a guidelines, scoring sheet, preliminary application template that we, they modified, I helped modify it, so I'm not gonna vote on it, to kind of streamline the process. It has a grading system. So you know, the higher the score, the more likely you are to be approved, so to speak. There's three different areas, basically community resilience, the strategic value for the town, the executability of the proposal. It's, I don't know, six, six or seven pages long from beginning to end. But it includes a lot of information. Who's going to be in charge of the project? Who's going to do follow-up with projects? Because even if it's, you know, ARPA funds put in a generator for the fire department, but there's gonna be maintenance for that. So who's gonna be in charge of paying for that maintenance? So after the initial ARPA. So this is just what they've come up with. They weren't expecting anybody to approve anything tonight. It was just, it was just put in front of you so you could see it. If you want to approve it, that's fine, but it was mostly just for review.
And I believe Paul Bannick moved to the next meeting, the March 8th meeting.
If you want to ask him.
He was gonna come to this one. I said, might as well wait till they reconvene, you know, after town meeting. You're gonna have two new members, you know, refresh everybody with the procedure and.
Okay. Larry had also emailed me and said he would be willing to come in once we had a new board and just, which doesn't have to do with this, but just go over procedure and use of executive session and.
Good idea.
Just, just an overview, which I thought was a good idea. I haven't had him since I've been here, two years, so.
Talking about Larry, say something?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
All right, so do we, we wanna?
That's up to you.
We're gonna table the whole thing. Do we want to table this until the next meeting? Well, that gives us time to look at it, review it, and we can approve it then.
It makes more sense after two new members.
Yep.
So the other thing, the other thing that I threw in your, in the packet that was ARPA related was these programs available to municipalities. So the state has ARPA funds that are different from the town ARPA funds. And they have designated specific programs for their funds. So if we have projects that might fall into any of these categories and we want more info, I know, of course, Steven Major's not online, but there's one that has to do with broadband access. And he would like the internet at his house. So there's a lot of, a lot of them have to do with stormwater management. But there's other funds out there that we can tap into, but I think we gotta be thinking about it quickly-ish. So I just threw that in.
All right. Thank you. Anything else on ARPA scoring sheet or ARPA in general at this time? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to town manager hiring committee appointment. We had discussed this last meeting.
Bye-bye, guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Cole.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good night. Thank you.
I thought there would be some people that were here that wanted to be on that committee, but there's not. So, well, there's a few online, but we have some names still.
Chris Potter could have been called out.
Oh, I've.
He what?
He could have been called out.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'll appoint Chris whether he's here or not.
I will second that.
See, he, he said he was very, very interested.
Okay.
You know, was all for it, being a business owner in town and.
Yeah. Susan had.
Susan Roman, yeah.
Had expressed interest. I had responded back to Susan and Sarah Waldo. She had expressed interest. I think.
I don't, I don't think Sarah's interested. I mean, she's just not here, but I, I had communication with her and.
Okay.
I did too. She emailed me and said she, she did have interest and I recommended that she contact Jason.
So I don't think, I don't think I heard back from her directly.
She's in California.
Yeah, she's in California.
We, we can always add.
If you have problem filling it, the, but what, the number of, whatever, how many slots there will be, she, she would be willing to participate, but she's.
Okay.
Well, right now, we officially placed on the website based on our last meeting, a committee that will be comprised of no more than seven members. Of the seven members, one will be one former Select Board member. One will be an inactive Select Board member, current. One to two will be employees of the town, and three to four members will be members of the community. Community will meet in person during regular business hours, and there will be a fair amount of time required expanding over a period of months. Interested parties should notify the town office via phone or email before February 22nd. Appointments to this committee will be made by the Select Board at the February 22nd Select Board meeting. And in lieu of that, if there's no objection, I am in receipt of a willingness by a town committing, a town citizen named Susan Roman, who has put her name in to participate on that board. And unless there is an objection from Susan Roman, Mr. Chair, at this point, I would like to formally introduce her as a member of that committee.
I have no issue. Congratulations.
Thank you. I'm honored.
So.
Truly.
With Chris, Chris Potter.
Yep.
Susan Roman.
Yep.
I would also like to take this opportunity to nominate Allison Bigwood to serve on this committee as well as a member of the town officers. It's gonna be town staff. If she would be willing to do so. I know she's just done an extraordinary job.
I would, I would be willing to. I was wondering if you would consider alternating me out with Kelly.
Is she on board with that?
She is absolutely on board with the way, the closeness that she worked with the manager, worked with me, her knowledge. I think it would be a, a, a good idea.
So at this point, I'd like to formally submit Allison Bigwood and the, and Kelly Thayer as a two-person tandem to serve and represent the employees of the board to serve on this committee, Mr. Chair.
No issues with that?
Nope.
Nope.
Pauline, did you have anything? Ted?
No, thank you.
From, from town halling?
It's still counted as one position, but sorry, not two.
Yeah.
So then if Pauline wanted to be, she could.
I, I wouldn't care if town hall rotated however they wanted to. It doesn't make a difference to me personally. I just don't want to get a committee so big that it turns into a muddled up.
Right, right, right.
You want to rotate Pauline with Kelly and I?
We could do that.
Yeah.
Shall we add, then, Mr. Chair, like to add Pauline O'Brien's name to that list?
Chuck had expressed interest in it. He's going to have to work with, with the manager, the manager's going to be, is his boss, so he's going to have to work directly with that person.
I'd also at this time like to entertain and submit for representative of the board, the current select board of the town of Westminster, Ms. Katrina Hamilton, to serve as the board representative for the committee, search committee for a new town manager.
I don't have any problem with that if you're interested in doing it.
Sure.
I think it's important to remember though, as by default, the board is really a member, a member of the, of the committee. As a whole. But I don't, we obviously can't be.
All there, all the time.
All there, all the time. Then it turns into a meeting, so it's fine to have one person delegated to do that.
Or the only end if she couldn't make it, then another select person should.
You could, yeah, I, I, no problem.
Your plan?
Yep.
Especially while it's going to be day, not night meetings.
Right, yeah, right.
To.
Job schedule, right?
Do we have an official name for a former board member?
I have to be more flexible with life right now.
Is that, do we have an official name for a selection for an official board member?
Sue Harlow did not call me. I didn't have any emails either.
Do you want to do it?
I guess I could. The worst case, I could rotate with her on that, okay? I'll be the main one if I can't make it, because I originally, she said, yeah, I can help out, whatever. So yeah, make myself a good one for it.
So then, Mr. Chair, would formally at this time, submit Mr. Craig Allen as the official member of the select committee for hiring a town manager as the official former member of the board of selectmen, excuse me, select persons of the town of Westminster to serve on the board. Lastly.
What's that?
He said he had no issue with it, that's too bad.
Lastly, I would submit, he's not present, so I don't want to be presumptive. I would submit the name of Mr. Charles Lawrence as a member of the committee representing the highway department as an official member of the, of the committee pending his approval, I, I'm not sure.
I talked to him on the phone yesterday and he said he would be fine.
Okay, so I would officially also like to submit Mr. Charles Lawrence's name as an official member of the select committee for finding a new town manager. I believe that brings us to seven.
We have six, if three, three from town hall equals one.
Unless someone wants to actually do it.
So if you get Chris Potter, Chris Potter, Craig.
Right.
Definitely, right? Katrina's definite, Chuck's definite.
Chuck, you.
Pauline, Kelly, and I can rotate, or you can put one of us on permanently, but I don't think, I don't know that. I'm not going to speak for you, Pauline.
I don't, I would not want it permanently.
I think it would depend for you folks, depend on your workload and the time. I mean, it may be Pauline, it may be somebody else, okay, you know, I mean, I don't know.
But honestly, we need one from the office that go back and carry through, Ally, really. When we get all done, we all go back. You people don't go back. We need one person to say, can we go back and talk to VLCT or can you go do this? We need at least one from that office to follow through after the meeting.
As the main, the main.
As the main, least, the information person.
Kelly is very, very interested in that.
Yeah.
She really, she's really anxious about.
She would be involved with information.
She's the closest, she's the closest to manager.
All day, every day.
All day, every day. And so, you know, I could, I think maybe I could pop in, I want to be there. So maybe it could be me and, me and Kelly and Pauline can step in when I can't. That work for you, Pauline?
Yep.
Alright.
Basically, three people equal two in this case, is what you're saying?
Yeah, yes.
I don't have a problem with that.
Only, and even, this building as a whole, they have to work with a person every day. We don't, we don't have to work with somebody every day. I mean, you know what I mean? So if there's two from this building, there's two from this building.
I, I don't see it as a big issue. No, but it's, so really, we're going to have one from the town garage, two from here, so that's three that are employees. Three employees from the town.
Right.
Correctly.
Yep.
A select person and an ex-select person, and that's five.
Susan Roman.
Susan Roman.
Six.
And Chris Potter.
Chris Potter.
Chris Potter, seven.
What about Chuck?
No, I counted.
He counted Chuck.
So how many do we have?
Seven.
There you go.
Yep.
Does that work for everybody?
Yeah.
What do you think? Happy with that?
You got that, Mill?
Got it.
Do we want to try to figure out at this time how we want to go about this search? Or do we want a committee to meet first?
I think the committee should meet, and I think, just my personal one of seven, that we spend the time to outlaw, outlay everything that we think to come back to the select board as a whole and saying, are you okay that we were going out to look for this type of one or two people? Or this is what we're looking for? Nothing's worse for the committee to be out searching and find out it's not what the select board wants to be searching for. If that makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we, we outline different roles. Are we going to actually look for two positions? Select a town manager and a finance director or, and where we're going to, where will we add? And how do we go about it? And before we go do that, come back to the select board?
This is, yeah, this is just my, my opinion, my personal opinion, is we all, we went through this last time.
Right.
I'm not going to have time to do that. I know it's going to cost us money.
Right.
But if the committee outlines what they're looking for, the board approves or whatever the word is, that, yeah, that's, that's what we're looking for.
Then the board can punch.
Throw it to VLCT or to somebody and say, this is what we're looking for, do the search. They're going to narrow it down, they're going to weed out. Instead of us doing that, not us, but a committee doing that and then us, it just seems like it's, it's just a lot of work.
No, that's what the committee is there for, is to actually direct and get all the information. Maybe come back and say, hey, this is what the VLCT, are we okay? Basically, just keep everybody informed and we go along, you know, so.
Okay. I think you've got a lot of good personality on this board, this new committee. And I really think they're going to bring a lot of different ideas to the table.
So a question, when you have a committee like that, do you have to take minutes and all that kind of thing? Or how, how does that?
One of those guys would be taking a minute.
Somebody would be, yeah.
We should, we should.
It's like a, a meeting, you're running a meeting.
You appointed, once you appoint people to.
I'm just curious, for my own.
Somebody doesn't come back and say, wow.
This was said or wasn't said, okay.
We should, unfortunately, given the expenditure that we've made so far, we should have a council, meaning our town council, have some type of an initial advisory role to this committee as to exactly those issues, keeping rotations, VLCT apparatus and at least providing, at least at the initial meeting or second meeting, Mr. Chair, some type of structural input as to, his input as to how they should proceed with VLCT and the process, because I think our town council would add valuable expertise and oversight on the process. That's just my two cents, but I think it's important that, that he be present at least at the initial outset to set some of the parameters.
I think it's important to stay out of trouble than try to.
Precisely.
I, I think that's a great idea. Yep. Ally, did you want to contact?
Oh, I can get down.
Larry, okay.
We don't have a date.
The earliest I can meet is Monday. I can meet as early as Monday.
Why don't we wait till right after the town?
Town meeting?
Yeah, get, get through town meeting, get that behind us, get a new board, all that, and then jump into.
I'd like, you know, a lot of things we could do, I still want to throw, I just went through three towns that just hired town managers to get, be nice to, like I said, individually, we contact different people to say, hey, how did it go? How did you come up with this person and how?
Yeah, yeah, it'd be interesting to see how they want to go.
Right, you said, we're not writing a book, you know, many towns have done it, so. But Larry would be, I agree with him, that was the first thing when I met Larry before was like, hey, let me just set the guidelines that you should stay with. And I think that that's the biggest, someone's wasting their time.
Given the technology that's available when you do meet, and you probably will not always have a full quorum, but as Craig just mentioned, given the number of people that he has access to, for example, there's no problem for those people to call into your meeting and share with them, that, share with you all the experiences that they have or maybe give some insight or observations as what's helped them or been successful for them in the past.
That's all part two.
Sure.
But in this times, we're going to be nice to deal with a couple other towns that just came through it. How did they get there and how did they end up there?
Yeah. Okay, well, we now have a committee.
Yeah.
Good. And we'll take that next step after we get a few town meetings and first, first meeting. Thank you, Susan.
Thank you very much, looking forward to it.
Alright, so I think we'll table the town manager committee till after town meeting. Just so we keep it on.
On later.
Anything else? Anybody have anything else for town manager hiring committee at this time? Alright, we'll move on to year-to-date financials. I asked for this just to be in the packet, so we had just a reference more than anything. I didn't have anything specific that I was looking for. Does anybody have any questions?
I have some information for you.
Okay, great, yeah.
So as you saw by signing the warrants that the high school and the school were paid this, this time around, and we held off on paying the fire district, because, okay, I don't know if, if I interpreted the minutes incorrectly, which is quite possible. So at town meeting, a lady had stood up and said she wanted to make sure that the fire district, fire district would be taken care of if Hold Harmless and Pilot was no longer existing. So she voted to get, get them another $20,000. I thought it was if it didn't come through. I gave them $10,000 in September because the Hold Harmless and Pilot wasn't in. Hold Harmless and Pilot is, is in now. The minutes, however read, they get $20,000 no matter what. It was approved at town meeting that they get $20,000 no matter what, an extra $20,000 in their budget. So that's, that's, me and, me and Chip read it over, read it over, read it over, and it was accepted in the minutes. And then their portion, their portion of Hold Harmless and Pilot is 13.42% of that amount, which comes to $22,613.80.
So how much we give them?
So.
Can you tell me what you're saying, Hold Harmless and what?
The Hold Harmless and Pilot payment in lieu of tax money comes in and a portion is supposed to go to the fire district.
Pilot is like, if your land is in current use.
Current use, that, Hold Harmless is current use, Pilot is like.
The police department.
They get the railroad, that kind of thing.
Yeah. They don't pay taxes, but they pay.
The state kind of pays on their behalf, their best way.
Okay.
So you got to take that off the top number of taxes that just came in. We had a lot of money go out for employees that no longer work here. So there's not any more money coming in except taxes this year. So in this fiscal year, so where, where we're at, everyone's going to get paid. I don't think we're going to have to borrow money, but we're going to be bringing it down pretty well. So.
But all, but the fire, so how it's going to fall through? The fire department has been paid or not been paid?
They have not been paid yet.
So out of that fund that we have left, the balance we have left, they've got to pay the fire department and no other big expense.
No. So if you look at the first page, it should, I, I think I wanted this one on top with the asterisks on the side.
Yeah.
So you see the top where we, that's tax money, that big, big number up top? That's actual in the bank right now, okay? All those things with the asterisk next to it are things we're obligated to. If that makes sense. Okay. That money's already been dispersed, is what I'm trying to tell you, into those separate funds, okay? Alright. Any questions on that?
Who wrote this cash in general, two million, that's chip right there?
That's chip.
But go back to the harmless, I'm looking at you. So if it's $22,000, we gave them 20?
Nope.
Didn't get that?
I gave her, I gave them 10 at the September collection of taxes because Pilot and Hold Harmless was not in yet.
Okay.
Okay? I am obligated to give them the other 10,000 on top of the first 10,000 because it was voted on.
Correct.
At town meeting. So, but their portion of what we just received of Pilot and Hold Harmless is 13.42%, which comes to the total amount of an extra $22,613.80, which they are going to put into their, it's not their savings account, like their money market account to when they need a new truck, is what they've obligated that to per town meeting, town minute, minute, town meeting minutes. Is that, am I clear?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's mine to me, but I'm just going to give it to Jason and, yeah.
We basically owe him $22,000 more dollars on top of the $20,000. Yeah, we owe somebody. We just didn't pay it in this table, that, because. Because I had, I had to wait for Chip. For his calculation on the whole, he gets all that stuff off the portal and all that, I don't touch it.
Yeah.
So.
Well, it is what it is, at the end of the day, we owe it, we owe it.
Right.
We don't give $200,000 back at town meeting, we keep it in the budget.
Any, any other questions on year-to-date financials from anybody at this time? Alright, seeing none, move, move on to Road Foreman's report tomorrow.
You can have this one.
I'll give it back to you.
Okay.
Chuck was not able to make it tonight, but he emailed me his report. It says mandatory pavement, pre-bids, meeting was today. Basin Brothers Springfield Paving Pike and Allstate Asphalt attended. So that's pretty good. They've been coming in early to address mud while roads are still frozen and are able to travel on them. Streeters are working on the break room and training area above the office so we can expand the office to be more efficient and have more room for records, office equipment, copier, printer. Corey has been going to Rutland the last two days, taking a state-funded welding class. The ARPA chair asked that the select board fill out the application for funding if the new scoring system goes through for the heating system.
I don't know what that means. What does that mean?
Scoring for this.
Oh, okay.
The ARPA, yeah, which we have not approved, so that's going to.
We're going to just.
That's going to be shuffled again. Yeah, or.
We get to that later. Under G.
G, yeah. Says next year, we are due to replace loader two, which is a 2,000 John Deere 544 with 80, 8,500 hours on it, and a truck number one, the 2017 Dodge 5,500 with 60,446 miles. With things the way they are, we are going to start looking into prices and availability and see what options may be available. There is a six to month, six to eight month wait on equipment, so to look. so to look now for next year is not as big of a stretch as you may think. Uh, that's, that's what Chuck sent me. I'd like to touch on the mud for a second. I know we've been getting some calls on the mud and it's, it's springtime. That's, that's what it is, I think. In the last five years, we've had a large influx of folks that didn't have dirt roads to deal with in their previous area, and now they do. They're gonna do the best they can, there's, there is no way, well, there is, there's a way to make it so you don't have mud, but you couldn't afford to do it that way, so. You, people are just gonna have to kind of work through it and they'll dry out eventually, but it's kind of, it's what it is.
None of our roads are currently closed, correct?
Nope, nothing's closed, and I, I don't think any.
So that's pretty good.
I don't think any are anywhere close to the degree they were last year. They're, they're small sections and pieces, but not.
Regional heights is by far the worst. It's the only way we could even drive through it. We gotta thank one of the neighbors, I can't figure who it is, somebody goes down with a tractor and keeps raking and draining that. Otherwise, even with my Volvo Drive.
Okay.
We bottom out and it, it's really weird, it's in a different, you know, it moves.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's.
Keep using it as a mud bog.
You know, it's like, you can't get around it, and it was in an area that wasn't always muddy, and the area that was really bad before is next, is, is dry, yeah, is really, it's real bad though. It's worse by far than I ever saw. But either Rick Raider or Paul Banner, somebody's got a rake.
It's Paul.
It is Paul, he's going down and raking it, and there's times where it wasn't, but that, I don't know, we can get through, there's people sitting with cars sometimes walking out.
Yeah.
I've never seen, but this, like you said, there's nothing much you can do about.
And next year, you may not have anyone there.
Yeah, no, yeah.
Just kind of is what it is. Uh, we also got a, um, a question about material being dropped in somebody's yard on Campbell Hill Road South. That material was dropped because the truck got stuck there. They dumped the load off, pulled the truck out themselves. I can assure people, nobody is getting loads of material, gravel, sand, whatever, that will happen to be road sand, but that will be picked up and cleaned up in the spring. It was not a, a freebie by any means. And that's all I had to add to this. Well, other, other than this loader, the loader purchase.
I'm not sure if he's got the feeling, he says next year, it's not the year, next he's talking, right. It's, so next year, we're stacking, we're gonna be stacking to come July 20, 23, 24. That's a truck. I think he's talking is 24, 25.
Yes. Well, I, I had a brief discussion on the phone, you know, this is a 2000, so it's 23 years old. If you bought a brand-new loader today, it will never last 23 years. It won't. If you tried to keep it 23 years, you're gonna have to have another $30,000 in your repairs and masons for emissions and electronics stuff. It's just gonna go, it's just what it is. So why do we keep trucks seven years? That equipment will never last that. I questioned whether we needed one. I also understand that it did take a while to get on that rotation schedule, and it would not be that great to get off that schedule, but if we're gonna start keeping, like, the, the next grader, it's gonna be an emission grader. The next, uh, the tractor now is an emission tractor, the backhoe's got emissions. All that stuff costs an incredible amount of money to keep running, once that warranty's up.
It's only standards to be in 23 years old, they should be looking back at the fund, we do it all the time on trucks and equipment. If they don't have the new after-treatment, which means they pollute the country. They have money in this, in, in the state you fight for, you have to destroy the brick, you can't trade your dent. So if you would first look at, is the thing worth anything?
Yeah.
We do it with buses, we do it with trucks, where they're sold, you actually destroy them, and in turn, they give you 30, 40, 50,000 dollars from the state to go get a new one, that's not.
That, that's fine, but it's still not gonna last 23 years. So it doesn't matter how you, how you slice it. And I wasn't necessarily talking about this 2000, I meant, so if they bought a loader, this would be the one that would go, and the one that we keep is the, is the newer one. Eight, 8500 hours on a loader is not that many hours. There's construction coming for 13, 14, 15,000 hours on a loader. It's, it's just gonna cost more to keep it that way. And we need to make sure that, we need to get the longest warranty we can. It's gonna cost, it's gonna cost exponentially more than what we paid for these ones. It's just what, it's just the way it goes. So. I, I guess my thought was, maybe the one we have, not this one, the next, the, the other one, we have it, have oil samples taken, know what we got. You know what I mean? Like, I don't know, I mean, a new loader probably gonna cost 300,000 bucks, about that little buck.
And that, those make some sense at least, because you're doing maybe 10 or 15 years, so sometimes instead of hitting the voters all up. The trouble with the truck leases, you're doing almost one every year, so it doesn't make sense, you're gonna have to charge for one. But a loader that you hit them up for three or 400,000 and you don't hit them up again for another 10 years.
Yeah, yeah.
Where you're better off to just go get a five-year lease and then own it after five years, just so you're not hitting up the voter so much at one time.
Now, I don't want, I don't want anybody to think I'm not for upgrading equipment, I just, it's just gonna cost a lot more money.
And if you go that way, you basically get it earlier than it is. To put the money in the savings, it does, the equipment keeps going up faster than what you earn the interest off, sitting in the savings, so you're better off to just go get a lease, dip, and keep making the payments like you were putting the money in the bank.
That, that's all I had for Road Foreman's report.
Can I just add something?
You sure can?
Um, after the storm, where we got 18, the big, one big storm.
This year?
Yeah. I know probably many of you go that way, but the, the backside of the Oak Hill Cemetery is a town road. And.
Deermont, you mean, or something?
Off, off Deermont, the Oak Hill Cemetery, the backside is a town road.
Oh, okay, I didn't know.
Um, a huge tree is down over that road.
Okay.
And I think that the, this is just what I think, that the funeral home is not gonna take the three damn. It's been great to have that tree over the road.
Keeps.
Because it, it was keeping the traffic out of the cemetery.
Yeah.
Now the people are going.
Around it?
They don't go around it, they can't go around it, the tree is so big, I mean, the tree is humongous. Now they're just going around the other side of the cemetery. The traffic in the cemetery, I couldn't begin to describe you, to describe. 11, 12, 1, 9. We're not talking about people walking their dogs, we're talking about people doing whatever they're doing in a cemetery. Swilling their tires. Not this last year, but the year before, somebody got stuck right there on the corner of Mike Hill and the town road, and they took a whole bunch of gravestones down. I don't know what you could do, other than put gates up, you'd have to put gates up in Rockingham. The traffic in the cemetery is unbelievable.
Because Rockingham owns that whole cemetery? Or only, there must be a town line somewhere near there.
Yeah, the end on my side is Westminster, so some of it's in Westminster, some of it's in Rockingham.
Probably three quarters of Rockingham, a quarter of.
Probably, probably wherever the town, well, I don't know, the town line is back where the.
About a tomb there, though.
Where the tomb is, so you go up the hill.
The tree is definitely on Westminster's side.
Definitely is.
I walk there every day.
Yeah.
Well, we, we talked about at one time putting gates on Windmill Hill South to keep some people out of there. Maybe we invest a couple hundred bucks in some gates there? I, I mean, I don't know how to go about.
I would suggest that we make the phone call to the Bell's Falls Police Department, because over half of it is theirs. Do they actually know?
I've called the sheriff's department so many times.
No, this is the Bell's Falls Police.
Right, doesn't matter.
They must, isn't there a gate on the?
There was a gate on the town road, I, I think, um.
It's an iron.
I think Bennett and Hennessy's put it up and they just took it down. There was a, there was a two post, two iron posts and a, uh, some kind of, and they just went right through it.
I think I'll, I'll call Chris Potter tomorrow and see what he thinks.
Yeah.
Like, what, are options?
Planning on taking.
No, no, it, no, and that's, I meant just in general.
But they're, they're just going around it. It's just, anyway, just.
Okay. Well, I'll try, I'll try him anyway and see if there's anything that, what, what can, could be done.
Yeah.
Anybody else have anything for Road Foreman's report?
This is my last meeting, I'm gonna throw out a dumb idea.
Okay, we'll give you a dumb answer.
Yeah, well, it's enlightening, we have seven big trucks, and I was dealing with some towns the other day, and they were talking about how, what they're doing is they take the, uh, the trucks to the school and get the kids to name the truck, so a nickname, so that it belongs to that classroom, so that when you see, because I have to say, I, and I know more than most of you people, when you say truck two, I have to think, what truck two? But if you told me it was Truck the Grizzly or something, whatever the name, so the kids have ownership and get to have the knowledge, and it's more fun to see a truck going down through that you know that the kid's named and they, they appreciate what's going on a little bit. So I was just throwing that idea, Chuck ever wanted to do that, I think that'd be a great idea. Get the kids, I'll be willing to pay for the lettering, because you'd put the, the name on the side of the door and I'd pay for it, and put it on with vinyl, and it'll just be kind of neat that where we all would know what, that's a truck, whatever the name is. And it comes from having the kids more.
State does that too, yeah.
Yeah, the kids, the state do it, I think it's a pretty good idea.
I can mention it to him.
Yeah.
And I think, I think you've already answered this question, but Chip Searns sat there when we were doing the budget and said that when he was in Rockingham, that there was an old truck that probably ran better. You're saying that that's not a good option to keep the trucks and retain them? Like, I don't know, I.
In 2010, we had to go to zero emission, there's nothing coming out of a diesel truck. In order to do that, we had to, like we said, add $30,000 worth of a scrubbing machine.
The trucks you have and, and make them.
It's better for the environment, it's better for everything, but it just costs a lot more, to be honest with you.
I'm gonna keep my personal opinions about that to myself, but.
I know he, he mentioned it, Rockingham had an old truck, and instead of trading it and spending the money.
Well, they, they actually kept their older loader.
Or maybe it was a loader.
Which was, uh, it's the same thing that we have as our older loader and traded their newer one in. Because nobody liked the newer one, they liked the older one. I, it's, I mean, it's, I'm just gonna use that as an example, I didn't buy it, to Craig, the last, the dump truck before this one I bought, I bought it, used, I knew what I was buying, I bought it, I could not keep that running. It was $10,000 I put in that truck just to keep it running, and that was only, that was a.
After treatment.
After, just a computer and a depth pump, that was not even a major component, that's just stuff that's bolted. It's crazy how expensive this stuff is, it really is crazy. Again. Keep it that length of time with no longevity.
That's right, it, no, not.
They have, when you hit, it's trade-in time, when we, I mean, never I trade anything. It is a giant pile of garbage, and I'm pretty sure a town truck takes a lot more speeding than anything I drive.
There, there was a time when you could do that, you could keep up on your maintenance, oil them, keep everything, you'd keep it for a long time. It's all the stuff that's on it.
It would blow you away what the difference in trades are right now. I've gone out and done, uh, one the other day, 2014, identical truck, one was a different brand, and we gave 8,000 trade for one, 65,000 trade for the others, they're identical same year. This shows you how well somebody takes care of it, what did they purchase, what's going on. We spend more time now with towns, not what they're spending upfront, because they wanna know what they're getting back. We're doing contracts now, and they're keeping them, and we're giving them 100,000 back guaranteed. And the towns that don't, all of a sudden, they're looking at, coming up with a 250,000, they're going like, with no trade value. You only come up with 150, you're a lot easier. But it isn't going away, we're, we're, it's.
Unfortunately, no, it's not, that's for sure. All right, let's move on, uh, we, we do need an executive session for contract issue. But we, we can do that after other business if we.
We can make the motion to go in there right now, or does that?
I will actually make the motion under executive session, subsection 313, for the use of executive session to consider not one, but two contracts, and that's what they are, contracts. These contracts also, so the public is aware, are contractual discussions long before this board, which will pass or have two new members coming to it in the next session. So this is our last session. Uh, it's important that the incumbent members currently here be present for at least a consideration, even if it's taken. That is the motion.
I'll second it. To invite the interim manager into that discussion at this time.
Yeah.
Uh, motion, motion has been made and seconded.
Who, I didn't, who seconded, I'm sorry.
Uh, Craig. Motion has been made and seconded to go into executive session after other business for two contractual issues and invite the interim manager to join. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Oppose. All right, so we'll move on to G, uh, town garage heating system. I don't have that paperwork in front of me. Those $38,000 and change. I, last time I had talked to, so I was actually questioned why we were gonna go with that system. And so I asked the, uh, Decamp, why, why we're going with this system versus just putting another boiler in and using the existing system. He said that the distributor came down, assessed the building, did whatever they do, measured it, and that was actually the most efficient way to heat the building. Okay, that's all I needed to know. Uh, the, the equipment is 12 weeks out. So we have a little time, but what did he say, Chuck said that that oil furnace burnt 300 gallons of fuel in one week? When it was cold, but trying to heat that building. So.
Let me ask you a question, what is, when they say efficient? That means. Less fuel to heat, is that what it's?
Well, the pro, the propane is less money to begin with, and it's gonna heat that, it's gonna heat that building for less. Whether that's less fuel, which would equate to less money. I guess we were hoping to use ARPA funds to pay for that, which I think we can still do, but we need to fill out the paperwork once we approve it. So there's two, there's like two and a half weeks, three weeks. Is the, is it, is there money available in the town garage fund to at least cover 15,000 for the deposit to get the stuff coming? And then just reimburse it with the ARPA fund when it.
He just got his half of the taxes. If you look at the highway budget status, he just received $1,156,000 in tax money.
Okay, so there, so there should be.
Definitely should, but it's gotta be in the maintenance line item technically, but it's in his budget, so.
So his budget is revenue, property taxes.
Yeah, but you're not supposed to spend money out of your budget line item, like, you can't.
But whatever, I, I guess I'm.
Let's begin with the boiler here, you gotta find money somewhere.
I, I guess I'm asking the board, does that make sense? To get the, give the deposit, which was 50%, uh, get it coming, it's 12 weeks out.
So we're not going to bid.
He, Chuck attempted two other places, CODA's, he said, and I don't wanna speak for him, but he emailed and called and never got a response. And I don't, I do not know who the third one was. So, okay.
He, he did bring stuff to the ARPA meeting, but I don't have copies of it.
No, I'm not impressed, I'm just, just curious, in case the voter asks, yeah, how, what was the procedure?
Yeah.
He tried.
I think the money's not as important as, as long as we did our own work, we're doing it, we're gonna come up with the money one way or the other, because we're gonna keep spending it on wasting it.
Well, that's just, in 12, you know, we still have four to eight weeks, six, eight weeks of potential heating that you're gonna pump some oil through that thing.
Yeah.
Like, I'd hate to spend all that money on oil when we could've taken a chunk of it and put it towards the.
3,600 gallons.
Yeah, I mean, that's a lot of money.
You're, you're paying for your deposit in the 12 weeks that we wait.
In the fuel.
In, just in fuel, so I make the motion that we spend the money on the deposit.
It's just a motion I'll second it, we're under discussion, right?
It, we will be, yep. Uh, motion has been made and seconded to approve, uh, highway department to spend the depo.
I think we gotta make the motion, if I can correct you, we're gonna make the motion to actually purchase the contract. Whether we put it in the deposit or not. We can't put a deposit without actually getting approval to buy it.
And I don't know what it's.
You see what I'm saying?
Other than hoping.
Call it the estimate.
In the, it was.
Oh, it's in the minute.
It was stuck in the minutes, I mean, it ain't, wasn't there?
I don't know, there should be.
You could just say, keep heating system approved, uh, quoted by Decamp, going in use.
No, we could make the motion to go ahead and give the chairman, the, or even Ally, the authority to sign a contract not to exceed twenty, whatever the total dollar is.
Two thermal cyclers, propane fire, thirty-nine by thirty-nine by ten inch stall. Thirty-eight, six eighty-five, not including the propane tank.
Yep. And to clarify on the propane tanks, we don't have to buy a propane tank, we can lease it, just like we do this one here, it's not a big issue.
A lot of times they don't charge you because you use it.
So like, is that part of the motion?
No, no, why don't you start that over?
Let's go ahead and make a motion to go ahead and purchase a heating system for the highway department and author, uh, give authority to Ally.
That's fair enough, yeah. Do you want to second that?
I'll second that.
Uh, motion has been made and seconded to approve purchase of a new heating system for the highway department not to exceed thirty-nine thousand dollars. Uh, any discussion?
Ally signed a contract.
Oh, sorry, yes, with, I'm sorry, yes.
No, no, it's okay, I'm just.
With, uh.
Okay.
That way.
Who?
You.
You.
Just, just assign the.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Even if we give a deposit, they're not gonna order without signing a contract.
Uh, he probably would, I don't, I guess I didn't ask that, but. Uh, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. I'm sorry for the confusion.
No, it's fine, make the sound.
Doesn't mean we won't do it again.
Yeah, that's right. Uh, all right. Uh, committees and commissions. Anybody have anything on boards, committees and commissions? No, seen none. We will move on to other business. Town managers report, uh, my apologies for not putting that in the regular agenda.
It's, it was just a fluke, sorry. Doesn't, as long as like, you don't have to act on anything, but it's a anyway, just a, important. So, uh, in front of you, have something looks like this, it's the sheriff's portal, STARS. From January first of twenty-three to present, we have not had a sheriff in this town.
Is it that one?
We have had Ashley Pinger for animal control.
And some of these say Dummerston, they don't even say West, they're not all Westminster.
Right.
Dummerston, high, New Orleans.
So.
Can't say it's on chart.
But this is, I mean, but the bills still keep coming in. And I know we have to because it's a contract, um, with them, um, but it's, it's pretty sad.
And as they, at the meeting, they said they were fully staffed, so is there a reason, they give you a reason?
No reason, um, to email and get an answer about Mr. Guido's concerns with, uh, neighbors in the junk ordinance. Um, he was kinda flipping, I sent it to Jason, um, and he, I told, basically I told you, I'm like, really dude? But, um, yeah, there is no, and I don't believe they even care, that they're not here.
So this is the only report that.
That's, and it's all, it's only animal control, that has nothing to do with, um, patrolling our streets every single day.
And this is important to get online.
Mm-hmm, this is, if they sat at Westminster Station Market, they could catch almost every other car that runs that speed, that stops on.
That's true.
Just remain on how many dog we should stop.
So you've actually contacted them, like you're, yeah.
Um, I'm, I'm done emailing them, I don't email them anymore, Millie.
Okay.
I did for coverage, I've called for coverage and there's never coverage.
Okay.
So this is just, this, this, this report is called STARS.
STARS.
And it's the, it's the sheriff's portal. Um, the other thing could, concerning the animal control officer, I had to, uh, have a resident give her a call because the Westminster Meats property, I don't think it's called that anymore. Um, their animals are getting out, they're starving, um, they're going down to a budding properties. Um, and they clearly have tags on them. Yeah.
Keep going, I'll just, that's all I'm saying.
They clearly have tags on them and they, it states that they're from that, that facility and.
That one up on the hill, as you go up that Westminster.
The one on Back Westminster Road. And, um, they refuse to take the animals back, is what this person told me. And.
I think they do still go by Westminster Meats, actually.
And, um, so I told her, she did not get satisfactory answers from Ashley or information from Ashley to contact me. I don't know what I could do at that point, but she didn't call me back. Um, huh, and the, the other thing with Westminster Meats is that the state will close, and I close the accounts for that to the tune of fifty thousand dollars and three, fifty thousand, three hundred dollars and change that goes back to the state. Westminster Meats is off our books, finally.
Dan Mandich, I hope.
Yep, it's all done. After we get, they get that check, they'll walk me through the closeout process and we're done.
Excellent, believable, yeah.
Um, nerve wracking. Um, and the audit report probably will not be ready for a town meeting, I was hoping to have it. Chip was working on some final things. I just got communication last week from one of the young ladies that was working with Chad and Jordan, asking me for all this information and I'm like, no problem, I'll get it to you, but where you been?
I wonder if they're on the same assumption like the school was, that we were later again.
Right. Well, I, I informed them that we, you know, they ask all those questions. It's, I think they are overwhelmed, I think they're just so busy. Uh, they communicate better with Chip than they do myself, because Chip does our financial stuff. So, um, I can get my hands physically on things, but Chip's retaining it because he's doing it. So it's, it's okay, Chip's been really good about it. So unfortunately, what we'll have to do is put it on the website when the audit is available. So people do know it's still being worked on, but it's, may not be available for town meeting day.
Have we ever proceeded in your career to town any day without it concluded on it?
Since I've been on the.
Yes?
Yeah.
Multiple times?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's.
Thank you. It's kinda confusing because it's an audit for a year, same old thing. And their book is an audit for that year, we're in this year.
Yep.
That we don't even know where we're at.
Right.
And then we're asking for the next year, so it really is confusing.
Last question, do we have a viable explanation for all of our fellow citizens and taxpayers asking the delay? Is this a mea culpa exclusively for us? Based on, you know, the myriad of things that have occurred there?
I think, I think that was, it was just a nominal effect.
Based on the many things that had occurred?
Yep.
Okay.
It'll get done, because this is.
It's gonna get done.
It's gonna get done.
It has to get done, it'll be done before, probably be done, it will start over.
Yeah, just as long as, and, and thank you for everything you have, just as long as we have an explicit, expressed, accurate response to our fellow citizens as to why.
Less than one percent of people would know what the audit report is because we do it and they audit it.
I understand, but if it comes up, I wanna make sure we're, we're at it with our response.
Yeah, that it's in, we're finishing up or hickin' it over and you'll get an audit, and all of a sudden if there's something wrong, you'll be the first to.
Well, then you'd be happy to take it exactly, that question exactly what you're asking.
I'll be standing right up and going, Katrina, could you add the incident question?
Actually, I believe you will be at this meeting.
Yes, it's, he is, he's not, he's not done till Tuesday.
Yeah.
So, to go back to the Westminster Meats animal thing, this is just info to have. So, all of those animals have tags from where they originate from, that facility, they don't actually, they own animals when they're there to get slaughtered, but the animals coming there came from somewhere else.
They come from all.
They come from all over, I've seen them with Wisconsin tags, with Michigan tags. I have called the state myself about the loose animals, because this is actually a federal issue. Because they're potentially spreading disease that's also potentially zoonotic, which means you can get it too. Not just whatever other animal they come in contact with. So, if it keeps happening, and I'm assuming Ashley is aware of that too, but it's basically, it ends up having to get reported to the state, or it should.
Is that a USDA thing happening, or is that?
It's a USDA Vermont Department of Agriculture, they should get notified every single time, every single time.
Isn't there a USDA person there too?
Uh, that's different, that's ins, that's to inspect the meat processing process.
I know, but if they're there and they see an animal walking around outside, you wouldn't think that.
They're pretty limited in their scope of what they can do, or will do sometimes, it depends upon the inspector. Um, and they're not there all the time. So, if, I mean, I've seen trucks pull in there in the middle of the night.
Oh, gosh, yeah.
Like, all hours, and there's no inspector there.
I've seen plenty of cattle trailers there, all hours, like big cattle trailers, not like little trucks around here, but they came from.
You know how many times they get stuck going up that driveway too?
I thought they were limited to what they could slaughter.
They don't, like, you might know this better, but I, if I raised a cow, I can't just bring it there and pay them, they have their own.
They have their own.
It's like a private facility, basically.
Yeah, yeah, they don't do anything for anybody else's animals.
They buy them, bring them in, slaughter them, and then sell that under their own.
Label.
Yeah. At least it's understood.
Wherever, I think most of it goes down toward Boston, I think.
It does, they're all from.
They're all from Memphis.
Yeah, and only one speaks.
So I guess, I don't, I mean.
I heard swearing.
Other than Ashley, I mean, what's the other, what's your?
And, can I just ask who the Ashley is?
Ashley Pinger, our animal control officer.
All right, sorry.
Sorry.
The only lady that does anything with the sheriff's department.
Yeah.
And she does a very good job.
Uh, she does, she's very good at her job. So, I believe that that, I didn't know all that about USDA and.
But you can track it to the farm by the tag number, the farm it originated from, in theory.
So maybe that's what she meant when she said she knows it comes from there and they refuse to animal back.
That doesn't make sense. I don't know why you would say, oh, that's not our animal, I don't know, like, well, wait, might give it to us.
But why don't they feed them?
Why don't they slaughter?
They don't have to feed.
They don't have to.
They don't have to feed them, they're supposed to just bring them there and slaughter them, they're not supposed to be waiting around.
They're under and around.
They're supposed to be there and then like dead.
It's in, in one piece and out like twelve hundred pieces. There's no keeping them there.
So that's weird to me that they're getting. They're not supposed to be sitting there for weeks or anything.
They do, they used to, it's not the first time.
No, they, it's not the first sketchy story that I've heard come out of that place.
They open the door and they jump out of it, I don't know.
They need a better fencing system.
Well, I, I.
Or gate system, yeah.
I don't, I don't know who else to talk to about that, other than.
Yeah, I'll keep you informed and I'll do what I can.
Yeah, okay. Anything else?
Nope, that was it.
All right.
I did enough damage today.
Thanks, Abby.
Yeah.
Uh, I will take a motion to go into executive session.